Okay, you're gonna call the Select Board meeting to order at 6:15. First order of business is to elect a chairman. Actually, I'm supposed to call it over on my tray.
In this, to the flag of the United States of America, and to agree lawfully for poster sayings, one mission, one regard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, the one meeting a year I get to call this order and I drop the ball. Yeah, that's... You should have been... We discussed that. All right, so, um, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the annual board reorganization. Two A is a election of the board chair. I will take a nomination for chair of the Select Board.
I nominate Brett Sanderson.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Floor is yours, Mr. Chairman. Okay, need to elect vice chair. I have a motion for a vice chair.
I nominate Justin Hijack for vice chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Guys opposed? Guys have it. Uh, election of clerk of the board. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Schmidt served on it last year, so I'll make a motion to put him in this year.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other one? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Uh, appoint union negotiation team. Last year, currently was Brett and Justin. I'm fine staying on.
I would be fine staying on as well.
Make a motion to appoint Brett and Justin to the negotiation team?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Guys opposed? Guys have it. Appoint Ludlow Enterprise Fund Committee. Um, that is not something we appointed last year, do not believe, but we would like to appoint it this year. Something that we need to address moving forward, um, kind of circling back to the enterprise fund of the town established many years ago. So, I think it would behoove this board to have two members on it. Who's well in the run?
Think George should be on of them?
I'd do it.
George?
I'll be on there with George.
Okay. Do we have a... do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint George Tucker Jr. and Justin Hijack to the enterprise fund committee.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Set daytime regular meeting and alternate. First Monday of every month and third Monday is alternate.
I'll make a motion to approve...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Appoint recording secretary, Lisha?
Make a motion to appoint, uh, Lisha Kleber as recording secretary.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Designate newspaper of record, uh, Vermont Journal is primary, Rutland Herald is second.
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. Adopt Robert's Rules of Procedure. So, just a correction, Mr. Chair, that this is the... Last year, we had discussed, at least at a couple meetings, rules of procedure, which, um, we kind of all felt we would have thought that was something that we had reviewed, and had reviewed by VLCT for public, for the Select Board, procedure for meetings. Um, you have copies of that, that has been updated. It's really, uh, refined, I guess, rules, uh, Robert's rules.
Okay. I love the packet put together, compliments to whoever did that.
I make a motion that we accept the Select Board Rules of Procedure for meetings for the town of Ludlow.
Second.
Second. Oh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. I will be passing this down, it just, this just needs a signature from everyone, thank you. Okay, consider of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda? No, sir. Okay. The approved minutes of previous meeting for our February 3rd, 2025, and March 3rd, 2025, public hearing. Motion to accept as written?
Second.
Second. Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Um, comments from citizens? Rules of procedure, I think those are great, I think it'll help the board. My only comment is on them, when it comes time for, um, comments from the citizens, generally, a Select Board works in the essence of a limited public forum, which is fine. I think where it changes to a traditional public forum is when you ask for comments from citizens. So, I'd asked, at that time, you just think about the essence of the forum that you're in at that moment, if folks have things to discuss, where it's not necessarily a limited public forum that really moves to a traditional public forum in that, in that one agenda item. For the next year, I'd asked the board to really think about, and the same discussion happened at the planning commission meeting recently, is to really think about, um, items that matter. Yes, the budget matters, you know, and, and there's things that you have to do. But a lot of discussion and topics that are brought forward don't move the needle for the town at all. They don't move the needle in the sense of job creation, in the sense of housing creation, you know, just the general, um, attractiveness of the town. You know, why do people want to come to Ludlow? Why would anyone want to come here? Is the question. If you can't answer that quickly, then that's something we should work on. You know, is it business friendly? Is it welcoming to folks? Can we house folks? You know, let's think about items for discussion in action, really, action, not just discussion, on items that move the needle for the residents of the town and the community. Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, thanks Eric.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on, appoint non-elected town officers. So, I just, I just, I put together and I put it up on the, the screen here, which is just for everyone to follow. So, our list of, starting with appointments of non-elected town officials, you have the recommendations in the letters of interest that are, were in your packet. I'm going to go through the list as it's listed on the board. At this point, there are no, I will put it this way, there are no contested, um, no contested positions. There's just basically one appointee for request for each position. I mean, that could change when we get into the wearer of coal and fence viewer. I know that's a tough one to decide between, but, um, I'm gonna go right down the list and we'll go from there. Um, this is the first year, obviously, after town meeting, that we have the first two, um, town clerk, town treasurer, assistant clerk, oh, assistant town clerk and assistant town treasurer. And these appointments, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say lump the two together, that are also tree warden and deputy tree warden. These are by state statute, once the Select Board appoints it, there's not a time, there's not a term limit on it. It is until the Select Board, so every year, the Select Board does not have to reappoint them. They are appointed until the Select Board decides not to appoint them, or they resign. It is just on the town to do our due diligence. Every year, we have to submit the tree warden, the deputy tree warden, now it will be the clerk and town treasurer. We have to submit that any, every year unless the Select Board changes their mind, or there's, decides to have a change in appointment. So, I just want to be clear with that. So, town clerk, Ula Cook, is my recommendation for that position.
Make a motion to approve Ula Cook for town clerk.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Town treasurer, letter of recommendation, recommendation from the municipal manager is Ula Cook.
Make a motion to accept Ula Cook as town treasurer for Ludlow.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Assistant town clerk, Pam Todd.
Make a motion to appoint Pam Todd as assistant town clerk.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Assistant town treasurer, Pam Todd.
Make a motion to appoint Pamela Todd as the assistant town treasurer.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Director of Planning and Zoning, Rosemary Goings.
Make a motion to appoint Rosemary Goings as the director of planning and zoning.
Open for discussion?
Brendan, there is a question on the zoning administrator versus director, and the director is the one that's appointed?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Brendan McNamara.
Make a motion to appoint town manager Brendan McNamara as the assistant planning and zoning officer.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Emergency Management Director, Angela Kissel.
Make a motion to appoint Angela Kissel as the emergency management director.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Guys opposed? Guys have it. Assistant Emergency Management Director, David Van Gilder.
Make a motion to appoint David Van Gilder to assistant emergency management director.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. One of the two DRB board members, three-year terms, Doug Sheehan.
I make a motion that we appoint Doug Sheehan to the three-year board position.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Second, three-year position on the Development Review Board is John Baurin.
I make a motion that we appoint John Bauer to the Development Review Board for the three-year position.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. And I'm gonna say that, I see Ula has a question, go ahead, Ula. Ula?
Question, I just wanted to thank the board for the support of being my, myself.
Said thank you for the support. You're welcome. Very welcome, well deserved.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Fence viewer, two positions, first position is Rosemary Goings.
Make a motion to appoint Rose Goings as the fence viewer.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Second, fence viewer position, Bruce Schmidt.
Make a motion to appoint Bruce Schmidt as second fence viewer.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. For the sake of clarity, I will take recommendations for the tree warden, again, just, and then moving forward, as I mentioned previously, so for tree warden, um, Phil Carter.
I would like to appoint Phil Carter as tree warden.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Deputy Tree Warden, Bruce Schmidt.
Make a motion to appoint Bruce Schmidt as deputy, uh...
Nobody else jumping in.
Tree Warden.
But Justin's been doing so good.
I know.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Weir of Coal, Lauren Greenslett.
Make a motion to appoint Lauren Greenslett, the wearer of coal.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Black River Senior Center Representative is Gene Strong.
I would, uh, like to make a motion to appoint Gene Strong as Black River Senior Center represen... Oh, I'm sorry. As Senior Solutions Council on Aging Representative.
Nope, you got it right the first time.
You got it right the first time. Too far down.
This is why I'm trying to check it. I would like to make a motion to appoint Gene Strong as a Black River Senior Center Representative.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Senior Solutions Council on Aging Representative, Gene Strong.
I would like to make... To appoint Gene Strong as Senior Solutions Council on Aging Representative.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Representative to Mount Escutney Regional Planning, Terry Carter.
Like to make the motion to appoint Terry Carter as our representative to Mount Escutney Regional Planning.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Alternate to the Mount Escutney Regional Planning, Rosemary Goings.
Like to make a motion to appoint Rosemary Goings as the alternate to Mount Escutney Regional Planning.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Representative to the Solid Waste Management District, myself, Brendan McNamara.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brendan McNamara, representative to the Solid Waste Management District.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. And Surveyor of Wood, Wood and Lumber, Bruce Schmidt.
Make a motion to appoint Bruce Schmidt as surveyor of lumber and...
Wood and lumber.
Wood and lumber.
Where did that come from?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. That is it for the elected, uh, non-elected, now we just have the... Appointment of vacant elected positions. For this position, we just have two. The first one is for a three-year term of the trustee, trustee of public funds, Doug Sheehan.
Make a motion to appoint Doug Sheehan.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. And third, a three-year term for Board of Listers, Doug Sheehan.
I'll make that motion as well.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Let's go to license review and approval. Um, so you have this packet, I'm not sure if you, how you would like to do this.
All at once.
You want to do them all at once? Okay.
Is anything new?
There is, to my, not, nothing is new, so there are, they are all, um, I'll just summarize, you know, Boward Hobart, EOB Tap House, Proud Bear LLC, KMS Inc., 1234 LLC, Homestyle Hostel. Well, this is what we should do, is let me, let's do...
I was just gonna recuse myself.
Okay, so you just refuse yourself? Okay. Brew Fest, Vermont Irish Pub, Johnny's Kitchen, Okemo Mountain, Brockton Corporation, OV Restaurant, Goodman's American Pie, 46 Depot, Leslie Stewart, Okemo Mountain again, Calcutta's, Off the Rails, and Fox Run Golf Course, and those are all that are listed on here, as well as, those are a combination of tobacco, first class, third class, outside consumption permits. If there's any questions on who has what, I'd be more than happy to read them and let you know, but I'll forego, forego the reading every one of them. I would obtain a motion as, approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the list as presented.
Second.
Second. Open for discussion?
I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. Uh, review and consider elevation project funding. So, this is a, unfortunately, is a, is an item that has been, is going to be pushed further, a little bit further down the road, um, for us. As you know, and you're aware, from the document that was provided in your packet, the town was awarded in September $500,000 at, from Vermont Emergency Management to begin to help fund projects that are considered elevation projects. So, in summary, this is projects that generally targeted at folks or properties that were substantially damaged during the flooding event, but are foregoing the option of a buyout, looking to stay in their home and going forward with an elevation project, which means they're basically right, raising their house up above two, it has to be two feet above BFE, so doing all that to meet, goes to stay in their house. Currently in town, we had two projects that were going through this, potentially a third, that were going, that have, were part of the elevation project far, long, far before the funding became available. So, we were working through this, one of, um, one of the property owners is the West family out on Red Bridge Road, the other is Alan and Kathy Couch on Meadow Street. Currently, both of those projects have been submitted to Vermont Emergency Management for review. It goes to their review, they go to, um, historical preservation is where that is hung up right now. The long and short of it is, we were hoping to come tonight and have the proposals and say, let's, let's do this, but things in Montpelier and things at the federal level are a little unstable right now, so some of the funding, we have the money in hand, but the, their review process is kind of, other things have jumped the line. It's been difficult to get a hold of. I have been in, you know, constant communication with the property owners, just letting them know where we stand. So, that's kind of where this is right now. We, we don't have any decisions to make tonight because we don't have approved projects. Realistically, I think we're going, you start to see, you know, those two projects approved, which then will allow this board to move forward. These funds need to be expended by the end of year 2026, so, you know, but for this year, every day is cutting closer and closer for construction season. Again, if there was more to talk about tonight, you would have had those things in your packet, but, um, unfortunately, I did have a very productive conversation with Stephanie Smith, who is the director of Vermont Emergency Management, or one of them. She apologized vehemently and just said, you know, some, some things have, it's just been a little crazy, and she promised to get back to me by the end of the week, so...
Are these projects that need to, you need to do the work and then you get the money?
Um, essentially, it is kind of done much like a buyout, where the bills are submitted, and with this, so if we award the funding to a property owner, the town keeps the funding, but the bills are submitted to the town, and this town pays them.
Are there any other properties that would have done this if the money was available?
Not to my knowledge, you know, a lot of it is, was really geared towards, one is the substantial damage piece of it. The other piece is that, you know, some, some places were saying, well, take a buyout, you know? But these are, again, the funding and the purpose for the project was, it kind of, we didn't, this wasn't something you applied for. This literally was, just came in the mail, and said, this is, we're trying to help, and it's geared towards helping those folks that are in this process.
Thank you for...
So, we will, we'll continue to push forward, and as soon as we have the ability to make a decision, we, we will.
And is that up to us to say, hey, we're gonna give this homeowner this much?
Correct. It, it falls solely, it falls solely, this is the direction of the Select Board.
And do we have an idea of what their costs, these projects were?
We do.
Great.
Eric Alden, Trailside Road. Just a question, Brendan, is that, are those funds specifically for lifting a property, or can they be used for lifting mechanicals, you know, getting other items out of the base floor?
The way I read it is that they are subs, for properties as a whole. In lieu, it's basically to, to bring, in lieu of having a FEMA buyout, so it is the entire property.
And with the, do you have a number on the fund? Did you say it was 500?
500,000, 300,000 per property.
That was my question, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, consider approval of town annual highway financial plan. So, these next two are just your standard, standard issued documents that we sign every year. One is our income for funding, that is the anticipated income from our highway, which is, this comes in at $111,974.84. That is broken down for the Class II and Class III roads, at Class II, 7.11 miles, and Class III, 45.59.
What was it last year?
Ballpark is, I don't have that number, I apologize, but I can get it for you.
Make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Open for discussion? Being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Guys have it. So, review and sign certificate, certification of compliance town road and bridge standards. Again, um, yearly standard and network inventory that we have to approve, that certifies that we adopt the towns, uh, state standards, and that we do have an up-to-date highway network that identifies, identifies location, size, and condition of roads, bridges, causeways, culverts, and highway retain, highway related retaining walls.
Make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed? Next, to review amen, employee health safety policy recommend, recommended by VLCT. So, this was brought us, to us while we were applying for a small grant for some safety equipment. They, VLC will usually review our policy and get back to us with any updates, thank you, updates or thoughts they may have, so as you'll see, one of our safety equipment issues that we, they want... one of our safety equipment issues that they wanted us to address was number 2A, that all operators of the sidewalk tractor are required to wear a seat safety belt at all times while performing, while operating the equipment regardless of the distance traveled or the task being performed. So we take a motion to accept that, that we have that into our policy.
Make a motion to incorporate Section 2A into our safety equipment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys opposed, guys have it. Short-term rental discussion regarding planning commission study findings.
Okay, at the housing meeting that we had, the joint housing meeting, the planning commission was commissioned with going back and looking at the short-term rental stuff we did before, and coming up with some new recommendations, which we did. And we brought it to the village trustees two months ago. And my biggest regret from that meeting is no motions were made and nothing went forward. So I'm hoping this time it'll go a little differently if you guys agree. So we took that chart, and I think you all have a copy of it. And I added some places to it. We looked at what currently is going on in Plymouth, Chester, Killington, Woodstock, Wind Hall, London Derry, and Peru. And the planning commission went through each of the recommendations from other towns and came up with a consensus about what we would suggest for Ludlow. If we don't want to kick this down the road anymore, we could actually motion to write an ordinance and have a public hearing about it. I've been conferring with Martha about this stuff because West Windsor just went through it and they, they decided to have an ordinance. And you have to warn a public hearing for an ordinance for short-term rentals in particular for 30 days. There's a lot of requirements just for short-term rentals that aren't for everything else. And then if, at that public hearing, if you decide to go ahead with a registry, you, the townspeople have 40 days to petition to not have a registry after the public hearing. If everybody, a joint, would have to be a joint public hearing between the trustees and the select board. And that happened in West Windsor, and they took it to a vote, and it's passed. But she thinks that the way it was worded on the petition, a no meant that it would pass. So she's not really sure if that's a reflection of the town or not. But anyway, I also, when I was doing this, redoing this chart before I brought it to the planning commission, I found out most of the things stayed the same. I saw that the noise restrictions, that most people have like abandoned those. And I think that had to do with being able to enforce that. Or they said that, just go with the towns. Well, anyway, I'll go through with what we suggested. If you didn't want to kick this thing down the road, I would be willing to take whatever you decide today, if you decide on, on to have the ordinance, and if you decide to, the particulars of it, and put it into an ordinance. Martha sent me several copies, they're both, basically all say the same thing. But then you plug in what you have decided for fees and other conditions. So what we decided for fees was that they would be based on a yearly basis, but that we would want the select board to decide that. A lot of the ordinances say every year the select board takes a look at that and decides whether to increase them or not. I mean, if you decide to have an ordinance, obviously. Permit registration required, permit registration would be required for short-term rentals. How many days permits were required for rentals that are one day a year or greater? Operator availability, phone and email will be required from the owner designated professional and our rental agency owner access email and phone will be required for the registry. Renters should receive a response within eight hours. These are the things we decided on at the planning commission to present to you. Occupancy, less than eight could self-certify. More than eight only allowed if approved by the fire marshal or the fire chief, if they're qualified to do that. Yearly cost, Vermont homesteaders have lower rates. That was something we felt strongly about. The fee per unit to be determined by the select board according to the budget needed to sustain the program. Knock box, we've decided that should be determined by the fire marshal. The current fire marshal, when we talked about it last time, said that they didn't think that was something that they wanted. But we haven't spoken to our new fire marshal about it. Zoning areas, they'd allow in all areas, parking would be onsite only. Insurance requirement, liability casualty, and a short-term rental endorsement would be required. State fire inspection required, less than eight occupancy can submit a health and safety form. And more than eight would require a CO from the fire marshal. Noise party restrictions refer to the noise sections of the village bylaws and the town bylaws. And I don't, that and weekends should not be there. That didn't get deleted, it should have been deleted. Fines for violation on non-registrations suggest a fine structure that is based on the number of days of violation. And company involved at the discretion of the trustees and the select board. Those are some recommendations we had. I don't know if it's, it's getting late, I don't know if you want to do this, but if you wanted to, you know, motion to create the ordinance, and if you wanted to go through particulars, you could do that now. But the earliest we could even have a public hearing would be June because it has to be warned for 30 days. And the trustees haven't done this yet. So that would have to be taken up at their May meeting, and they would also have to agree to create an ordinance. So I'm not sure what you want to do. Would you be willing to go through each item and make a decision?
I wouldn't recommend coming to any draft until they're both agreed on.
Well, the thing is, is that the public hearing changes could be made. So what you would agree on, if the trustees had a different agreement, changes could be made at the public hearing until you had a consensus about things.
I think we've kicked this down the road so long.
Yeah.
I, I, Terry, I think you guys did a great job at this and really getting it pared down. In one of the earlier conversations with, I think it was Granicus, they really highlighted what is the purpose of this ordinance? And if you're scattered, you know, Burlington was an example where they're trying to hit all these different things. It had issues, and I think it's really pared down well to safety being that, that priority. I think it's realistic. I think the one piece that I don't think we need to get into is the insurance piece. We don't require insurance for any other business in a town. There hasn't been issues where the town's gotten involved because people haven't had insurance. I think that's kind of on your own. But I think the rest of it makes a lot of sense.
It was something the planning commission, a majority of us did want that in there. And it looks like every other town too also has insurance requirement.
Mr. McNamara, wasn't there an issue in Upstate New York regarding an insurance issue?
Regarding the...
Short-term rental.
Having insurance?
Not having insurance. And was the town held liable on that?
I'd have to check, I'm not sure.
Mr. Welland, is the chief still here?
Yep.
Hey, chief. Mind if I ask you a question? Eight and below can self-certify. Eight and above would have to be approved by the fire marshal or chief. The last study, I, I think it was 1,000 short-term rentals in the town. Do we know how many would be over eight people?
That's ballpark.
That's...
I know Ben did a lot of...
I think if you were to go online, you'd be able to find somewhere around 1,000.
And of that 1,000, how many have over eight? It's gotta be, it's gotta be a lot for a small department to wade through.
It's eight. I'm guessing, I haven't looked at that in a while. And I wasn't prepped for it, but I'd say 800-ish.
So if the ordinance was to start and we would have to require over eight to be CO'd, how?
Take some help. You know, I think that's something we gotta come up with a game plan on. And I certainly, as I've talked about this before, I think it's really imperative that whatever we do, we make it something that's feasible. Don't, don't write something that we can't accomplish. I think this is great, I haven't looked at the document, and I'd be happy to also give it some review on the fire safety end of that. Yeah, I think, you know, yeah, without reviewing it, I don't have a ton more to say. But certainly there is a lot out there. And I, with looking at that, you know, what is the, what's the time period that you have to get it inspected by and so on? Because certainly there would be a large influx to start. But then those things would, should slow down because they'd, they'd get hit. And I think a lot of those places hopefully can supply current fire marshal inspections. And just to clarify, so fire marshal, like, we do not have an MOU with the state at the moment. So I, I am not able to go do those inspections. I'm sure that we would be able to get an MOU to be able to do inspections of that nature. And through an ordinance, you can do your own thing a bit as well. You know, my biggest concern with that self, self-inspection is who's being truthful on it and, and so on. And, you know, I know there's lots of folks in the room that have, have gone through that. But, you know, when you put a document out there that says we're counting, hold on one second, Tilly, touch. You know, how, how people are deciphering that, I think, is really important. And how we work through that and get into places, what's the complaint process and so on. I think those are all things that should be in that ordinance so we can follow up on those things. I'm happy to work with you folks however need be and whatever the pleasure is of the board. So I know I jumped all over the place, I'm sorry about that.
No, I appreciate that, it covers a couple future questions I may have.
And I do think having, we would want to get to a point where you are, you get certified no matter what. Ultimately, you can do that self-certification. But Ben went through five to seven years of training to become a fire marshal to understand that code and do that, expecting our residents or, you know, people doing it to say, hey, yeah, I'm good on code and something happens. I do think the state does have some responsibility to say, hey, if you're gonna have these codes, you need to be able to provide the inspections for those. So that's, that's a bigger conversation. Maybe that's something we take on as a municipality. But starting out with the bare bones of what's required already, I think is a good move. And I do think really fleshing out, whether it's Granicus, whether it's GOBS, a third-party company to handle this is is beneficial for the town. You create a budget, it's gonna cost this much. You make sure the fees are covering that. And, and the last piece, as noted here, you rent one day. So you could be renting long-term, short-term. We are making sure that those are safe for everyone involved.
I think that's an important piece, is a lot of people are like, oh, but it's a long-term rental. Well, the, the codes are still the same, whether it's a long-term rental, or a short-term rental, or a day, or a year. It's, it still meets those same things, so...
I, one thing I, I think is important is that, I know it was brought up about 30 days was as soon as the policy could be brought forth. I think, looking back at last time, is that it's very important to have all things flushed out, right? So like, we've just brought up a vast amount of issues, right? Like, who would take care of it, right? Budget, all those things. I know that's a lot of work to potentially get to where you then vote yes or no, right? But if you have all those things in prep beforehand, that makes the decision a lot easier. And there's a much crisper yes or no. There's not any ifs. That's at least my takeaway. To at least have considered all the options and all the avenues. We might go very basic and, right, and it's very simple. But like, I think if we have all those in whatever ordinance or policies that we've already answered all those questions, right? Just as you said, oh, he answered five questions, right? That's an important part of that process.
And I think that would be fleshed out mostly in the public forum meeting in 60 or so days because the trustees would have to meet. So tonight, the planning commission's looking for direction to move forward with this. And then to present it to the trustees. So tonight, a yea or nay is going to decide whether or not we do a public meeting on it.
Is the public forum going over the ordinance? And if that changes, is there another public forum?
So my understanding is that the public forum, we're gonna call it, it's more of a public hearing on an ordinance. So we would be presenting an ordinance for a short-term rental ordinance that then follows statute for how you adopt an ordinance, which then comes for X amount of days, as Terry had outlined.
Do fees need to be in that ordinance?
Yes.
So that, that's where I'm saying, like, it is 60 days, right? So go to the trustees, the trustees say they can move on. That puts at least 60 days out. Is 60 days enough to, to draft a proper ordinance to then get your public opinion at that public hearing? That, that's my, that's my biggest thing is that I know this is a very hot topic. And I don't want us to come to the public hearing portion and say, well, we didn't consider that, or we didn't, oh, we didn't put that in there because that's gonna come later. I think it's, you know, as we, being if this is something we want to relook at, we need to have all those questions as part of that ordinance very much figured out.
And I would, I'll speak from my seat here. And I'm not going to, you know, I won't speak for Chief Welland a little bit, but I'm gonna echo what he said is that, yes. And George, he said, if, when we do this, we also need to, if we have the ordinance in place, we also need to be ready from an operational side of how we're going to enforce it. And just be ready to do that. And really have it thought out of, this is how, this is who's doing it, this is how we're doing it. If, you know, if there's an issue or there's pushback, how is that dealt with? And we just need to make, because again, this is one of those things that, you know, I, I kind of liken it to a little bit to like what we're going through with the merger a little bit. And, you know, we put the brakes on that a little bit just to slow it down because this is one of those things that, it is a hot topic. And if you're going to do it, you, we, we want to do it correctly and have every box checked so we can say, all right, chief, we need you to do this, and this, and this is how it's going to go. Or just making sure, and my concern is the ordinance and the verbiage as it's proposed is one thing, but the operational side is the, is a whole other can of worms. Can be done very, I'm not gonna say very easily, but it just needs to be very well thought out.
We need to have, you know, before when we partnered with a software company, it took many months to figure out which one to go with and have all the training and go through the coursing and sign the contracts. So I think tonight is not, let's set an ordinance. Tonight is, let's set a path forward, if there is a path forward. And I think direction of engaging with the planning commission and the fire chief to understand what an MOU with the state would look like. Identifying a structured intro into it so it doesn't just flood us with 1,000 inspections to do. And understanding what the structure looks like. I think most of the questions and the enforcement will come through electronically. But what does that look like? Great presentation. Thank you.
I don't, is it realistic to, Ben, is it realistic for you to take on any inspections for short-term rentals in, with your current responsibilities?
I mean,
Status quo.
I'll do whatever the board says. You know, so on a perspective of my stuff, so having taken over as the chief of the ambulance service as well, you know, my docket is certainly a little bit more full. I think we need to look at what the ordinance says to really determine that. So, you know, I think if we're gonna take over inspections of short-term rentals, we're gonna inspect everything. It's not just gonna be over nine or more. It would be, all right, we're gonna inspect for eight or less, or nine to 16, or 17 and greater. And, you know, there's different parts of that. And my reasoning for that is it's all about... And my reasoning for that is it's all about life safety. I don't, I don't, I don't care what we have for a fee there. I don't care what we're looking at. The, the concept for me is how do we prevent somebody from getting hurt? And we've certainly had instances this past, in the past year, where we've been really lucky that people haven't gotten hurt. And, you know, I'm lucky enough that I still, when I can, do inspections with the fire marshals so I can see what the different issues are. And, you know, between Noah and Susan, like, we're, we're seeing those things almost. Like, there's not an inspection that I go to with them that we don't find something. You know, when you walk into a place that's got high levels of, so I've, I've said to Brendan, you know, come in and said, hey, we've, I'm denying occupancy to buildings because they don't have any working smoke detectors and we're there and getting high carbon monoxide levels, right? The idea is to prevent those things, so. Tilly, touch. So, do I think it's doable? Sure, we'll get it done. I think having some help would be, be great. I think we can come up with some solutions to make those things happen and make it work for the town as a whole, so.
You could also say, like, within five years, you know, like, a lot of towns, I talked to a lot of administrators that, from towns that are doing this and, you know, they graduate into it. Like, they did the places with the most occupancy first, obviously. And then over a period of five years, they did them off. But they have a lot less than we do.
They have a lot less, but at the same time, again, the fire marshal should have been into a lot of these. And if we're able to get that MOU and use their software system and be able to access all of that information, that should make that quite a bit simpler. And I think having that working relationship, partnership with them is imperative in making it all, it all work smoothly. Again, I would, I think it's doable. I would love to be involved in the creation of it. I think, I understand, right, that we've been talking about this since before I started here. And it, but I do agree, like, you want to have this done right to start. And I, I would make sure it's obtainable, so.
I feel like the first step is, is kind of identifying that, that partner, that software company to, you know, help outline fee structure. I know they help with ordinance crafting and things like that. So I, I'd really like to give the planning commission a next step and, and maybe that's meeting with Ben to go over that. And then it might make sense to work with the existing company that we already contracted with or interviewing those, those next two. But I think having that budget to be able to identify costs. And ultimately, I want to make sure we're giving the planning commission some actual, here are some things that we'd like to see.
Mr. McNamara, will you be able to facilitate a conversation with our old software company, Granicus, with the planning commission? And then, Mr. or Chief Whalen, it would be nice if we could see you at a planning commission meeting and we could troubleshoot some of these ideas at that meeting. There's no motion to be made, but I think there's a general consensus and direction to be given. And my, my vote would be to move forward with exploring this.
Terry, does that?
I just feel like the planning commission had some questions as, that they wanted you, you guys to come up with, like, the fee structure. But it sounds like the company also needs to do that to make it economically viable in the town. So I just, I would hope that the next meetings in May, that short-term rental ordinance would be on the agendas for the trustees and for the planning commission. So at least we're making momentum toward that. And then the earliest we could have a public hearing would be mid-June anyway.
If that timeline works. If you had ordinances to look at without that fee structure, I think that's okay. But we would definitely want that fee structure in there.
People just plug their stuff into it. They've all been vetted by the state, like West Windsor, Merp, that's already been vetted. Shit, that definitely is vetted by the state. The Chester one looks exactly like it. But these particulars that we're asking you guys for or the company for, those have to be plugged in there. So those are the particulars we need to, you know, to create the ordinance.
Mrs. Carter, as an example, I just remember this from when we had the software. They, the software company recommended that the permit fee to be equivalent to a one-night averaged rate. So out of a thousand SDRs or the 800 or whatever it was, the average daily rate of those was $500. So they recommended a $500 fee. That's just a basic outline of what the pricing structure could look like.
What if the planning commission wanted it was a homesters? You know, people that actually live here in Lenoir, are just rented like the attic or something, but they had a lower rate? Like, I think somebody has a 300 rate? Or if they live there, they're 500 if they don't?
Yeah, I think something like that.
I also think it's kind of hard to, without knowing how much it's going to cost, you can't say this is what we're going to charge, right? That's, in a lot of ways, you, you have to run it as like a business, right? Is it, if we've decided life safety's a factor, which I think everyone would agree, this program should probably pay for itself, right? Right? And so if we don't have any clue of, this is how much it's going to cost, right? How can we accurately set tonight, right? Let's just say it, right? Like, without at least having some knowledge, right? Which is a great opportunity for the planning commission, I feel. And talk with Ben, right? If Ben says, hey, we need to add staff, right? Like, say, we need to hire somebody that, to help do inspections. That we're going to pursue the MOU, it's going to take two years to do this. Well, that's a pretty substantial amount of knowledge to like, okay, this is what our, our costs would be. This is what we have to set, right?
I agree with Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, just one thing I want to add, and we're going to talk about this, is I've always seen this as an opportunity for the town to bolster its full-time fire department staff as well. So it's something where you're adding this responsibility onto the, the fire department, but we can also get a full-time, you know, fireman out of it as well. That's not going to, you know, like, the inspections, yeah, it's daunting. His inspections are a lot longer than mine, but you get through them one at a time and then eventually you don't have as many and, you know, you get through them. But to be able to fund more full-time fire department staff, I think, is a really important aspect of these revenue streams that we should explore. Is that something that you want us to kind of calculate in when we start talking about cost, thinking about overall cost of this program?
I believe it to be a wise point.
I think anything's on the table.
You're still going to have to maintain it.
Because rent was an inspection once a year, once every other year, right? Like, those are, and, and I think that's the discussion that the planning commission should have, right? It says, hey, we've got a thousand rentals. If you stagger it every, so that you've got 500 or 300 a year, right? Whatever's a manageable number, right? Like,
Sure, my, my point, George, being though, is that that, the new, the fire department employee wouldn't be just like inspect, they'd be a fireman, fireman paramedic.
And that's what I'm saying, anything's on the table. If that's, I think we would all say that that would be a benefit to the community. You know, if that's the way that that's where it's folded into, right, under life safety, sure, put that as part of the proposal.
And also, you know, some of these are questions that you're asking the select board. The fees, the yearly basis.
The select board writes ordinances, but I've been allowed to help because I, like, 10 of them from neighboring towns, and they all say exactly the same thing, you just have to plug in your particulars.
I mean, this presentation's great, you know, a yearly basis, sure. Is it a fiscal year or a calendar year? Probably a fiscal because it would be July 1st. Permit registration, all these, it all makes sense and is streamlined, so, thank you. I don't know if we can give you any more direction or if you guys have any more questions.
No, just keep moving forward.
Yeah, I think Ben can give you some good guidance on the, the occupancy, what, what we require there. I think the, the rates get answered.
So working with Ben on what, on the plans we have in here first.
Yeah, the, how the implementation will work, the MOU structure. The fee structure will be discussed with Granicus, the software company we used to use. I think contacting them is a wise move.
Just so you know, Chester did have Granicus and they didn't hire a person for them and ended up firing, because they didn't hire a person within a year to, to, you know,
Administer it.
Granicus company, it was in the Journal like a couple of years ago.
I think I remember that, yeah.
Plymouth uses a $10,500 program, their own software, and they have two part-time people that run it. They only have like 50 rentals.
Yeah, I think a company like GovOS or Granicus or something is beneficial.
But if you hire Granicus, make sure they put a person on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The only reason why I say them is because we have, we already have a working relationship or had one. By no means do we have to use them.
I think you want to move this along, hopefully. First, just a comment, you know, if, if I'm running a business, I expect that I'm going to have to have some permits or fees to pay. So, you know, I don't think that most folks would have an issue with that piece of it. I would expect that I, I'd have to pay something, you know, in some, some form of, of running a business and the short-term rentals is running a business. I just wanted to make a comment on the, you know, piece of this I think could be dropped to lessen the conversation a little bit is the insurance piece of it. I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a requirement to show insurance, insurance for any permit that's required in this town. And it's certainly not for folks that are renting long-term that the town is asking for their insurance. If those folks have a mortgage, they have to have insurance. Having insurance does not make the place any more safe or any less safe. And I think having the requirement is going to, my thought would be, it put more burden on the town because now the town is going to have to decipher whether that policy has the right limits, whether it's the right coverage. And if it's not and something happens, then there's going to be something that the town has to answer to, you know? So I would, I would think about that piece of it. And I've never really heard a good explanation on why that, why the planning commission is pushing that piece other than that other towns have it, you know? And, and that's just not a, you know, that's not a reasonable explanation in my point. So I think the insurance piece of it is, is a requirement that, that is not necessary and it's just adding more burden to, to, you know, getting something done here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a bit apprehensive about the insurance as well. I do know that homeowners' policies have a short-term rental umbrella that a lot of companies use. And I think that's a wise idea for the homeowner or the company that owns it. I will say, you know, I carry insurance for my businesses and an insurance adjuster will come out and tour our property every so often and make sure that we're in compliance with certain safety features. So it does increase the safety, just.
But I don't think that anyone showed up at that trail slide fire. No, they were never inspected to make sure they were up to code. I'm assuming they had insurance required by their condo association. I don't think the homeowner stuff does what the business stuff would do. Some of them are great, some of them not so much.
I'm on the fence about that myself.
Moving on.
Thank you.
Department head reports for February 2025 and March 2025, you guys have them?
Yes.
Any questions on any of them?
No.
I do have one comment, actually. Is there any way, I'm assuming these get emailed to? Is there any way to keep them in PDF format versus like scanning them in each time? It's just something like I can't copy anything on it, so.
So say that again, just to.
Like, a lot of this stuff, it, it's like a scam of a piece of paper.
So you're just saying to have them sent in a PDF?
Like, in PDF form? It's very basic, but it makes.
Yep, no, we can do that absolutely.
Makes computer savvy.
Makes computer things a little easier, yeah.
One more, I have one comment, Brett. I just want to say Cherry Nicole has over $1 million received in reimbursements. I think that's a pretty notable, and nine other grants. There's been a lot of questions raised about that position at some of the other previous meetings. And her quarterly report lists a million in reimbursements received and nine other grants.
We should be totally clear that that extra position that was created has paid for itself over and over again just by capturing.
Yeah, I, it, I don't know if, it wasn't last meeting, but a couple of meetings ago, I think it was brought up. There were people like, well, what do they actually do?
You will see it, yeah.
So their, their quarterly report, I was like, oh, that's, that's at least worth a note.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's great, yeah.
Anything else on department head report? Moving on to municipal manager update.
Thank you. So I just kind of want to start, this is our first meeting since our annual meeting. So I just wanted to say thank you to the board, the community for town meeting, thought it went very well. Thank you to everyone for coming out and voting. Had a very strong, you know, a strong voter turnout, so that is very much appreciated. And all the hard work from the board and the staff to put, you know, budgets together, presentations together, I think showed how hard we worked and those people worked with, you know, what the outcome of some of the votes were. So I think that is a very, I know I felt very proud of the, the support that was shown by the community from, from our voting standpoint. With that being said, the options tax is one of those, that goes into effect. When I met with the Department of Taxes, that goes into effect July 1st. We should see our first payment mid-October.
Do they do it quarterly?
It is quarterly, yeah. I mentioned earlier the merger. You do have a copy of the merger timeline. As I mentioned, we slowed down a little bit coming into town meeting just because there was a lot going on. And this is really something that I feel if we're going to do, we should do correct and we should make sure every item is checked off. And there's a lot to it. So with that timeline, we are looking at a vote in August. But there are certain steps that the town and village has to take, one of which is a first public meeting between the town and the village. I would propose that we hold that on May 20th. That is a.
Monday?
No, that's a Tuesday, that's a Tuesday. It's a what? It's your birthday?
Better way to celebrate.
Then how about, you know, do it on Brett's birthday? Okay, then we'll do it on Brett's birthday, if that works, May 20th.
May 20th is good for me.
It would be a joint meeting with the trustees, I'll confirm with them as well. Paving in the village is starting the 15th, which is being done by Fuller Sand and Gravel. They have the contract with V-Trans. They will be going village line to village line, right through the town. Some work is being done at night. That, those night shifts are generally speaking 7:00 AM to 6:00 AM or 8, or 7:00 PM to, or 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So it depends on the location. We have marked out all of our water line locations, valve boxes thus far. That is going to commence, again, the 15th, that will begin. There will be a contact for a PIO, which is the Public Information Officer through the state of Vermont. That information will be located on our website. So obviously, if people have questions, comments, concerns, you can contact me directly. But also, the PIO will put out weekly updates that give status of the project. There's also a field office with the superintendent and engineer that will be located directly right next to Vale Bridge.
So that is where they're at. When is that in October?
They're shooting to be done much earlier than that. That is why they're starting so early. Hoping to be done mid-June.
Really?
They go, they're going to go quick.
They should pick a month.
They sent me an email and I thought it said fall 2024.
That might be when they finally finish striping everything. But they do have some places, for example, the traffic light and right in front of Vale Bridge where they're going to have to box out and cut because they're going to hit gravel in that area. So myself and Ron, Ron specifically, we're pretty adamant that they get in there and go right down to the bottom because otherwise they're going to go through and it's just not going to be done correctly. So that'll create a little bit of an issue, but it will be done right, so.
Thanks, Ron, for doing that.
Yep. The, we have the RFP out for the Little Eek Field, the old Little Eek Field. So reclamation of that, we have a site visit Wednesday. So basically what that will entail is, there's still a lot of flood debris there. There is still fencing dugouts that are located there. The, this is obviously FEMA funded, so we have an RFP out to go in, reclaim everything that's there, take down. There's, we're going to take a closer look at it, but there is, it might be the ability to leave some of the structures. Like there is a dugout, two dugouts and a backstop there that first look is not structurally damaged. So I'm not going to rip down something that is not structurally damaged. But everything else is coming out. They're going to reseed and it's going to be a grass, you know, it'll be all seeded in, not topsoil, but reseeded. Things changed a little bit because there was, unfortunately, you know, we've been working on that, the brick grant, the brick program, which was all the flood study and.
The river project?
Huh?
The river project?
The river project, that was terminated today at the federal level. So that is dead where it stands. That was, you know, that, that's unfortunate because there is, there was a lot of time and energy that was put in to that, which was going to be a very, you know, Ludlow was headed in a very positive direction with that. With, you know, flood mitigation dropping, using this timber insight, the Little League Field, possibly 18 Mill Street. And everything that we talked about, but that, we got notification today that that application and all that funding is dead. So that's quite unfortunate.
Is funding a project like that potentially something we can do?
No. I, that's a, I mean, that is a, I mean, we could, but that is a multi-million dollar project. It's a very big, you know.
Is there any small stuff that we can do?
And that's something we can revisit, but a lot of that unfortunately, that was such a large project that encompassed the watershed around you, that it all kind of backed into each other.
What's the biggest cost there? Is it just the excavation and hauling of material?
Yeah, and the engineering side of it, you know, because that is so in-depth of how, you know, the Little League Field would impact, what happens upstream, et cetera, where the water is coming from developed. You know, we had that public forum last week that was here. It was great. We had a great turnout here. People were identifying what was going on, you know, hazards. The town was put on by Mount of Scutney and unfortunately, you know, it looks like it was a waste of time at this point.
I'd be curious if they had any, even if it's rough ideas of, hey, it's a $200,000 in engineering. Or, you know, I don't know if there's any value in that material where, hey, this is for grabs for a contractor or.
Sure.
I don't know. But if it's, you know, it is something to keep in mind.
Yeah, no, and I don't think, you know, I know they said they were going to circle back around. But I think, you know, that was a pretty difficult pill to swallow today for, I know, well, myself, but also regional planning. That came out about 3:30. So unfortunate. Last but not least, where is he? There he is. Just wanted to welcome, obviously, the last weekend, last week, Friday, we welcome, sent Chief Billings off into retirement. He actually texted me this morning and asked me if he's, is there anything you need to do or you need to know anything? I said, just hang tight. But our new Chief Warful is here in attendance. Thank you, Chief.
That tell me I didn't wear all my shiny stuff.
This is good. We've had boxes of gold coming into the office and one of it just says Warful. So we've been making sure our chiropractor policy is up to date for him. Welcome Chief. You know, it's, today's kind of the first, first day off and running, but it's looking forward to many others. So thank you very much.
It's also Chief Billings' birthday today.
Is it really? Oh God. I'll have to tell him happy birthday.
Okay, other business?
Do have one, so we've kind of, kind of ties into what we have been talking about today. But one of our, I think our previous meeting, two meeting, February, we elect, we made a consensus to have Noah be our liaison to the planning commission. That is a huge piece here, especially moving into where we've been talking about. Because, and I kind of echoed, you know, what, you know, like what Eric said as well is what are, what are we looking to do to, you know, really take another big step? Like we do a lot of things and I do, you know, every day that sometimes feel like they're, you know, it is a maintenance job to an extent. But where are we and what are the next big things that we can really take a look at? You know, I feel like we really, we've made some steps. We have this, the merger coming up. Hopefully that will go through. And we've made in the two years that I've been here, some tremendous positive steps. And it feels like we have a tremendous amount of positive momentum and support right now going on. After coming through like a horrific event like that flooding. So where, where do we want to go and, you know, really increasing the, and I think we kind of did it tonight. Like, and it was not necessarily intended to play out this way. But the conversation with the STRs and the planning commission and being able to have that direction and communication between the boards and the departments is something that we, we need to continue and jump on kind of what we, what we just did. So I would like, you know, before I defer to Noah on any of his thoughts, I, I'd like to just, as long as there was, you know, moving forward, kind of having a, you know, a, an update provided from that perspective, you know, what Noah's had with the conversation with the planning commission, et cetera, as a stand, as a standing update, just so it is on the agenda. But Noah, do you have anything to?
Yeah, so it's been definitely following planning commission. It's something that really, that drives a lot of where the town goes. It's something I feel like they don't get a lot of direction from us, from the trustees. And a lot of times, you know, Terry is a go-getter. She's looking for grants, looking for all these opportunities, which is great. And I don't think we are necessarily giving them the, the tools where, hey, they're able to come up with like some very impactful things. And to, to start out my first real meeting with, with them, I went through our town plan. And this is from 2018. So we're already going on seven years, a little less. And we had a bunch of high priority, medium priority, low priority goals that I think we created this document. And we don't necessarily refer back to it all the time. We do have STRs in here. We had the merger. We had an options tax. So we're definitely hitting some. And I don't know if that's partly due to just blind luck or these, these things keep popping up. But I think it's important to look back at some of those things. And a couple of things that, that stood out to me were housing. That's promoting the existing housing projects that, you know, we just spent all this time redrafting or, you know, just modifying our zoning for this neighborhood development area. And there's may not be the follow-through of, hey, I get a project and I come into planning and zoning. Hey, this is exactly what we did this for. Let's promote that. Or going out, hey, we did this and this is the perfect property. We put that out for an RFP or we talked to a homeowner or property owner or something like that. There's also tax incentives for long-term housing, which hasn't, hasn't really been explored. And then another big one is village revitalization master plan was on this. I think that touches on a lot of things, specifically where, hey, we're doing all this paving that's coming through. Sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, all that has been big talk. And we're coming in to do this paving project. We don't have anything to say, hey, this is where we want it. We've done, we've done public hearings, we've done studies, whatever it might be that, hey, we're going to spend all, or states spending this money. And we don't have that stuff outlined where it doesn't necessarily have to mean spending the money, but being ready for, hey, that grant comes up, the state's doing a paving project, whatever it might be, we're ready to go with that. And using this to help shape the, the planning zoning stuff that we're, we're talking about. Versus, hey, a grant comes up and we do this thing that doesn't necessarily hit what we're trying to go for. Or it just is kind of off in this other area. You know, I think Brendan really hit it where we do a lot of just maintenance and, you know, the, the day-to-day stuff, which is it needs to be done. But I think thinking about these bigger picture items and giving some direction to, to the planning commission to tackle some of these things. And ultimately, one thing I said to them was, you know, the select board, the village trustees are there to give you the, the go-ahead, the resources. And for them to say, hey, we need, we need this funding, we need this person, whatever, we need an answer to this question. I think tonight was, was really productive where they got some of that when it came to the STR. But ultimately, they're, they have the energy, they have the people. Everyone was very excited to kind of like get into this versus working on the nitty-gritty all the time. And I think that a little bit of that is, is on us too, where some of these items are things that the select board needs to, needs to tackle. And I think along with that, village revitalization plan is a general capital needs assessment. What do we need in the town? I know Ben mentioned in his report about the fire station. We've talked about the municipal safety building. Like there are some of these bigger things that may impact those, you know, these paving projects or this village plan or, or things like that, that I think need to be, you know, we should be thinking about just as much as kind of giving direction to the planning commission. So along the lines of, hey, the options tax, the merger, you know, what is that next big thing that we want to, we want to tackle? And I think a lot of it is a separate committee or a combination with the planning commission and another committee or something like that. But, you know, village revitalization, housing, capital needs are kind of the, the top things that, that came to mind and are all very connected.
Could just make a quick comment, piggyback on Noah's remarks. We are, we're all very excited. We want to do, we want to push the ball forward. The big thing this town is missing is a full-time position, planning economic development coordinator. So, you know, when you go to the zoning office, the zoning office is kind of supposed to tell you, here's the box you have to live within. Here are the rules. Now, see you later. But as they leave the zoning office, they need to be going to a separate office, the planning office and economic development office, where that person now is a full-time position. That person now says, this is what Ludlow's trying to do. This is the type of development we want to see. This is where we're earmarking it to be. There, there's none of that at all. So that is a profession in itself. That is a hundred K a year position. And, and if the town is serious about tangible change and really seeing things new and become renewed, that is imperative because a planning commission that meets once a month of laymans, we, we put on a good show, I think. But we are laymans. We're not, we don't have any background in engineering or architecture. We don't have any background in urban planning. That's the person that you're looking for and that you need to really move these larger projects forward and to make them actually feasible and tangible. Right now, that's a huge piece that we're missing. So, you know, you talk about charity and, you know, we're concerned about adding that position and her salary. Well, she paid for herself probably in the first week she worked, worked for, for us in that position. Same thing with that, that position is how you make things happen. Basically, to say it kind of more nonchalantly, it's a, it's a fixer. Someone that navigates through zoning, navigates to the planning commission, navigates with the select board and village trustees, and then makes it all happen. That, we don't have anyone make, we don't have that one person dedicated to making it all happen. And until we do get someone in that position or we start kind of jumping on the ledge and saying, hey, we're, we're, we're now waiting outside of our comfort zone and our, our ability, the planning commission, the select board, you know, it could get really dangerous. So just something to, food for thought, that, that is a very typical position within a municipality. And that is a position that typically gets things to, from, from on paper and in everybody's head to something tangible that everyone can grasp and see.
I appreciate that. We have talked about that up and down both boards for about a year, year and a half now. And I think there was some discussion of it around budget season, but it kind of died on the vine. So it's always worth. I could not agree with you more. I think we need to take a, a real look at what that position looks like and move forward with it.
I think the biggest concern at, at the time that it was brought up was, we did, we had grant writer and planner. And we were like, are we going to try to add two people at once? And I think we felt that it was, let's add the grant writer, see how it goes.
If the grant writer keeps it up, we'll have it for the planner too.
Well, no, but that's, but that's just what I'm saying is like, I think we picked the one. It's like, sometimes I know we, we get accustomed that we move at a slow pace. But, you know, how, how do you eat an entire pizza by yourself, one bite at a time, right? We made the one bite. We got ourselves a grant writer who's more than paid for ourselves tenfold. You know, hey, that worked. Maybe it's time to take that next step. Something we should definitely consider.
And I think it's smart to have a city planner because we do have a great planning commission. We do have a regional planning commission. Studies are done all the time, can be done. But we do need that fixer, that person in there to actually do it.
Between, you know, full-time position, 40 hours a week. And if the regional planning and planning commission meets 16, 18 times a year, that the work will never get done.
Mr. Alden.
I really should have my own microphone. Eric Alden, Trailside Road. Just to jump on Noah and Ryan's comments. There needs to be a vision. You know, Vermont, as you probably know, is first or second in, in the nation with, you know, for the oldest population. So our residents are aging out. Vermont is number one in the nation for losing its college graduates. So young people are not staying here. The town itself is, is losing population every year. That's a bad formula for, for any town. In addition to, to these ideas, you know, some of the things that, that I've been involved in, especially on the business side and business development, is, you know, we have a team that goes out and searches for businesses to come in. We say, hey, this town is looking for this. Come in, this is what we're going to do for you. And we do it all for them. We get the permits for them. We run them through all, the whole process. We find the space, negotiate any rents, you know, and that's all free to those folks coming in. And we don't get paid for it. It's all volunteer. But to have a vision on where the town is going, you know, especially even in the business district, it's, it's tired. You know, just the, the whole look of the village is tired and it needs a real full revamp, revitalization as in Noah's words. But there needs to be a real commitment to it and that commitment needs to start today, not a year or two year, three years from now. Because we, we are losing population. And there's no reason, as I said earlier, like, why would a business want to go, come here? We should be going out saying, hey, bring your business here. We're going to make it easy for you to open. You know, that, that's part of, part of the planning and that's part of the process. And, and that, that piece can be done easily. You know, folks will volunteer for that. I'll volunteer for that myself to help the town do that, because I have experience in that. But, but it needs to start. You know, we need to say, hey, this is our vision. As Noah said, folks spent a lot of time creating that town plan and it's just was closed and put away. You know, you just haven't reached any of those goals that, that folks really, obviously they wanted those goals. They wanted to reach those goals. But for one reason or another, just haven't got there. And that reason is really the commitment. Not that folks aren't committed to getting things done, but they really got to take that extra step to commit to those specific projects, which will benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else under other business? Moving on, possible items for next meeting, May 5.
I guess SDR should be on there.
And I know Phil Carter wants to come talk.
And Phil Carter.
He wants to come talk about. He wants to come talk about tree ward and stuff. He kind of has a report, wants some direction.
Yeah, and I think that extends to these other bodies where Phil Carter, I know he's come like asking for like some direction, and for us to like just pick something and.
What about his deputy tree warden? Is he coming?
Yeah, where is he?
There he is.
Mr. McNamara, on next month's possible agenda, can we pull up some traffic studies from a few years ago? I know Mark did them, I know planning commission had some. I, I would just like to review those, moving forward. I know we've, like Noah alluded to, we got kind of caught flat-footed here with the repavement and our lack of add-ons or understanding of it, but I think moving forward, we do have dominion between the Ludlow signs. It's a state project and they pave, pave and pay it, but we get to decide where the crosswalks are, we decide the speed limit, we can decide a lot of things, and I would like to take a look at that stuff.
I'll, I'll see what I can track down for those.
Great, thank you.
More orders here, possible executive session personnel, contract legal issues.
Do you need it?
I do.
Make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Contract and legal issues.
All those favorificities, say hi.
Hi. Thank you, everybody.